The econometrics journal, special section on the econometrics of forecasting. So we have two good speakers for you today. Raphaelo Giannini from UCL and Simeone Kriem from the University of Amsterdam. And then their papers will be discussed by Brendan McCabe from the University of Liverpool. So I guess we should start with Raphaelo's paper first of all, that's economic theory and forecasting. Thanks Raphaelo.
Thank you. So. Okay. Well, very good. I want to thank Rachel for inviting me to this interesting session. So, so given that the title of the session was something very, very vague and very grand, I thought I would just, you know, choose a title for my paper that was equally vague and general, that would allow me to talk about some of the work that I've been doing on forecasting and hopefully give you a sense of where the literature is, at least my take on the literature at the moment. So this is largely based on joint work that I have with Josep Paraguza, who's at Louis University in Rome. So when you hear about forecasting and economic theory, this is sort of my view of where the literature has been in the last couple of decades. So there's been a lot of developments in forecasting methodology in particular. And broadly, one can view two different strands of the literature while competing with each other. So on one hand, the vast majority of the literature has focused on forecasting with what I would call a theoretical methods, such as VARs, Bayesian VARs and so forth. So this has been, I would say, I would account for some ninety percent of the literature. I totally made the number up. The second strand, which is a very small part of the literature, has started to look at how we can do forecasting based on theoretical models. And in particular, I'll be talking about these dynamic stochastic general equilibrium DSG models. So the theoretical literature is much larger and in some sense, we know much more about what is successful with, you know, econometric methods for doing forecasting. And we know a little bit less about the performance of theoretical models. So on the theoretical side, there have been several methods that have proven to be successful. So generally speaking, factor models. So the essential idea, one of the key lessons that we have learned from a decade of forecasting is that in order to be successful at forecasting, we need to find methods for reducing the dimensionality of the system. How can we forecast with, in the presence of rich data sets while keeping the dimensionality manageable? So factor models, Stock and Watson and Fournier-Halle-Lippi and Reiklin are in this strand of the literature. Similarly, Bayesian VARs, which is the idea that we can try to maintain all of our variables in the system, but try to shrink them in some way that may or may not be based on theory. And similarly, forecast combination, Bayesian model averaging and so forth. So the bottom line is that we know more or less how to be successful with reduced form or theoretical models. And there isn't a consensus in the literature as to which one of these methods is preferable, if any. In fact, there is both in empirical evidence and also there's some theoretical contribution by DeMozzi, Non and Reiklin that show that these models, these methods for doing sort of data reduction are generally comparable, at least in large samples. So on the other hand, there has been some increasing dissatisfaction, particularly in some policy circles or central banks with the lack of theory in these reduced form theoretical methods. And in particular, there is this paper by Ed, Kylie and LaForte, which are, I think, at the Fed, who advocate looking for models that can tell a story about why a particular forecasting method is successful or not. And naturally, a Bayesian VAR, a VAR is unable to do so because it really is not based on theory, it's just a data-driven methodology. So partially as a response to this, there's been a growing literature that tries to look at forecasting, at forecasting performance of full-fledged estimated dynamic stochastic general equilibrium models. So this is very small literature and Smetz and Bautis, it's not really about forecasting, it's more about fitting the data, but it's been used and it's now adopted by, I would say, the vast majority of policy institutions and central banks in the world. So a lot of the forecasts that are made at central banks at the moment are based, at least in part, on DSG models. And there's a nice review by Christopher Cohen and Varner in the Oxford Handbook of Forecasting. Unfortunately, and this is, you know, some people may argue with this assessment, but there is no overwhelming evidence that these methods based on theoretical models are as successful as reduced form models. So sometimes these are based on specific sample sizes, specific models, there's no assessment of robustness, there's no, sometimes it's not even based on an out-of-sample type evaluation. So overall, there is no overwhelming evidence that we should completely discard reduced form models and adopt dynamic stochastic general equilibrium estimated models as of yet. So this has been particularly common, under attack in the recent years because of the inability, the utter inability of DSG models to predict or explain the current crisis. So the, why, why, what are the drawbacks? What might be the possible explanations for this? So our take about this is that the fundamental problem is that in order to be able to produce macro forecasting is essentially based on trying to estimate joint conditional densities for some key variables of interest. So we're trying to capture the interrelationships between the variables. So this is quite simple to obtain, these joint conditional densities in the context of econometric models such as VAR models. This is much more challenging to do in the context of estimated DSG models. Due to the fact that a DSG model, which comes from the optimization of agents in a, you know, in a complex, sort of large dimensional system, requires the model to be, first of all, rich enough to be able to capture all the variables of interest. So this opens up some possible concern about misspecification of any DSG model that is estimated. And essentially, these models are nonlinear, which means that in order to be able to obtain a likelihood to estimate the model and certainly to be able to then produce conditional densities that we need for forecasting, we need to be able to solve the model. So due to the non-linearity of the model, the best solution would be numerical, but this becomes infeasible in any realistic model. So the typical approach is to approximate the model by linearization, which involves possibly a loss of information. And as it turns out, all of the results that are based on DSG, estimated DSG models are actually not DSG models, but they are linearized versions of a DSG model, which can be viewed essentially as a Varma model with some cross-equation restrictions dictated by theory. So essentially, what the literature calls a DSG model is just a restricted VAR with some implicit econometric parameter restrictions dictated by theory. So what we're trying to advocate here is looking for a middle ground. So we think maybe expecting to estimate a full-fledged DSG model and expecting the performance of such estimated model to be comparable to a reduced form model is too ambitious. At the same time, perhaps we should, it's legitimate concern that, you know, policymakers have at central banks, which is asking whether economic theory plays a role in producing accurate forecast. So we're trying to look for a middle ground. And this is based on joint work with Josep Paraguza, as I said. So the motivating question is that, okay, if we don't want to go to estimation to a full DSG models, can we look for a way to produce conditional densities essentially, so forecasts, that are compatible and coherent with the theory? So when I talk about theory, I will be very specific about that. The premise, the motivating goal of this, of this paper is that thinking that when one thinks about the general structure of a DSG model, not all components of a DSG model, as we argue, have the same theoretical content, in the sense, what do I mean, in sort of a loose sense? One can think of an Euler equation, of a first-order condition coming from some optimization problem, as being more theoretical in some loose sense than a law of motion for some unobserved technology shocks, for example. So whereas when one estimates a full DSG model, one has to take seriously every component of the DSG model. And it's very difficult to understand the different impact of the different components of the DSG model on the performance of the forecast. So we want to focus, if it's possible, on the more theoretical, in some sense, part of the DSG model, which is the equilibrium conditions. So we're thinking about the Euler equations. The challenge is that Euler equations, equilibrium conditions are moment conditions, so they don't naturally specify conditional densities that we can use for forecasting. So can we construct such conditional densities that are at the same time satisfied by construction the theoretical restrictions? So we advocate doing this and we think that this represents a situation faced by actual forecasters at central banks, which is by now, we know there are ways to do, to produce accurate forecasts using a theoretical methods, such as a factor model or a Bayesian VAR. So we sort of take the state of the art in a theoretical forecasting and at the same time, we have a set of theoretical restrictions which the a-theoretical forecast may not satisfy. And we advocate trying to start from an a-theoretical forecast, which we know works well in practice, and try to incorporate some theory using projection methods, instead of going to a full estimation of a dynamic stochastic general equilibrium model. How do we do this? In a nutshell, so this is quite doable, quite simple to do in practice. So suppose we want to forecast a vector of variables at time t plus h, so h, multi-step forecasting is allowed, based on some information set at time t. And then we have a set of separate k moment conditions, theoretical restrictions such as Euler equations. So this can be a subset of the Euler equations of the equilibrium conditions. So there is quite some flexibility into which theoretical information we want to incorporate into the reduced form model. So importantly, we have to assume that these restrictions are valid for every point in time. And then I'll talk about the role played by this parameter theta zero. So the important point that we want to emphasize here is that these moment conditions don't necessarily need to involve all of the variables that we want to forecast. So the idea is that we have a very large dimension of VAR, which is in practice, who is, is used by a forecaster, but we have maybe an Euler equation, which only involves a subset of the variables. But because of all the dependence between the variables, these Euler equations essentially impose a restriction on the entire joint distribution of all the variables in the system. And moreover, this can be a nonlinear, typically will be a nonlinear restriction. So we will be trying to incorporate this nonlinear information and see how this affects the joint density of all the variables of interest. So a simplifying assumption that we can make in the context of forecasting, and it would be important to, for the econometrics, is that the parameter theta zero here is known. So, so this is known in the sense that we will be doing an out-of-sample evaluation. So we assume that in the out-of-sample, the parameter is either known, so for example, this is calibrated, or it's estimated on a different data set, such as a micro econometric estimate, or if it's in an out-of-sample context, it will be estimated in sample. So we're conditioning on this particular parameter to make things simple. So the essential method in a nutshell is quite simple. So we will have an out-of-sample setup, we have a set of forecasts for, in an out-of-sample portion of the sample. So I will just index them from one to t minus h. So suppose we have an a-theoretical model such as a VAR, a Bayesian VAR, a factor model, and we produce a set of density forecasts, so these are density forecasts, typically multivariate normal, which I will call Ft. So these are a set of a-theoretical density forecasts for each point in the sample. So what we advocate doing is at every point in time, projecting such a theoretical densities onto the space of distributions that by construction satisfy the moment conditions or the equilibrium equations. So this is a, it's a very well-studied problem in statistics and has been used in different contexts. And this essentially gives a new density, F tilde, which is an exponentially tilted version of the a-theoretical Bayesian VAR, for example, density, which is simply given by the product of the multivariate normal density times this exponential function transformation of the moment conditions. So these are eta t and lambda t parameters are obtained, particularly the lambda t, by solving fairly, what we think is a fairly tractable optimization problem, which is the minimum of this integral. And eta t is just the integration constant, which is obtained quite simply. So essentially, what we will have to do is this minimization, which is the dimensionality of which is the same as the number of moment conditions we want to incorporate. So typically, these will be very small. It would be one or two, at most three moment conditions, depending on the model. So, and our suggestion is to use this projected or tilted density, which is, it's no longer a multivariate normal, because this changes the entire distribution of the, of the variables considered, but by construction, this density satisfies the moment condition, whereas the initial density may or may not satisfy the moment condition. So some intuition about what is this tilted density? So this can be viewed as, out of all the densities, we're thinking about searching in the space of all the possible densities satisfying the moment condition, the Euler equation, we're choosing one that is closest to our reduced form Bayesian VAR density using a particular metric, which is the Kullback-Libler information criterion. So the Kullback-Libler results in this exponential version. Naturally, this is not the only measure of divergence that one can use, so this can be extended. But we think that Kullback-Libler has an appealing interpretation. This is particularly appealing because the integration constant in the tilted density can, as we show, can be related to the relative, the Kullback-Libler information criterion, which is a relative distance of the original a-theoretical and the tilted density from the true unknown density. So, and similarly, we can interpret these weights, lambda t, which are the weights given to the moment condition, which is, and we don't do testing, but one can extend this to doing some testing about the, how, how much the original density satisfies the moment condition. So a lambda t close to zero would, would suggest that the initial model already is close to satisfying the moment condition and therefore no tilting is necessary, whereas a large lambda t would suggest that the original density is misspecified in this very specific sense of not satisfying the moment conditions. So how do we obtain this in practice? So this is done numerically. We have an integral, so this lambda t solves an integral, so this can be done numerically. This is one possible, easy way to do so, which is to start to draw from these a-theoretical densities such as multivariate normals as draws. For each one of these draws, we approximate that integral with an average of these, the original multivariate density multiplied by this exponential of the moment condition and minimizing over lambda. And then we compute the lambda, the eta t as the integration constant. So essentially, in order to produce forecasts, it is very common to draw from the distribution anyway, to produce density forecast, when, particularly the multi-step horizon, where we don't have necessarily a close form, we will be doing these draws anyway. So this is a, an extra way to reweight essentially these draws by reweighting them by these Wts weights, which are the exponential tilting weights, which will enforce our draws to satisfy the moment condition. So once we have these draws from the new tilted density, we can produce point forecast or we can look at the entire density forecast performance. So in a simple example, to just give a sense of what we're doing here, how, how can we map, because this is quite hard to sort of visualize in a multivariate context. We can think in a very simple, univariate context what we're doing here. Suppose we have a true density Ht, which we don't care about necessarily, but we know that it has some conditional mean mu t. So our moment condition, which is the only thing that we assume to be true, is that mu t is the true conditional mean of the variable. We don't care about specifying the rest of the distribution. So for simplicity, we assume that the mean is known. For example, this could be based on a different data set. So this, for example, could be used to incorporate surveys, data from, survey data, expectation and so forth, and can be extended to also incorporating higher moments, not necessarily just the mean. So suppose we start from a density forecast, which is a normal, for simplicity, with some estimated mean. So naturally, if the estimated mean is not equal to the true mean, we have, that the moment condition is not satisfied. So they are misspecified in this, in the sense that they are, the mean is, they're not centered in the right place. So the procedure at each point in time will be to project our normal density forecast onto the space of densities with mean mu, which in this case is a very simple problem. And in fact, we can find an analytical solution to that minimization problem, which will give us our tilted density, which is something that looks awfully familiar, in fact, it is still a normal distribution, with simply some shifted mean. So what we're doing in this very simple context essentially is just shifting the forecast and centering them at the correct mean. And in fact, we can also derive what these parameters, lambda t and eta t, are analytically. Normally, we won't have an analytical solution, we'll have to do this numerically. But here, it makes, it's quite intuitive, the interpretation of this lambda t, it's the difference between the true mean and the estimated mean. And also this eta t, some quadratic transformation of that. So essentially, in this context, this is a very simple example, they're related to the degree of miss specification of your original mean. So, and it, the miss specification that matters for the purpose of only forecasting the mean is how far the mean is. So we don't care about what happens in the rest of the distribution, we only care about where the density is centered. And we have the limiting case where we have the correct mean, that the two constants will be equal to zero. So this is a simple re-centering. And in general, this is also a very simple example in which the tilted density is normal. This would not, not necessarily be true, generally, it would not be true. So what we have, we start from a well-defined, well-understood multivariate normal distribution and what we end up with is a, is a something that is, is modified by the incorporation of this possibly nonlinear moment condition and it's something we can draw from, but it would not be part of a known family of distributions. So we can ask, for example, what is the effect of incorporating an Euler equation into not just the mean, but the entire density or different moments, the variance, the correlation structure and so forth? And again, so normality is a very special case, but this is not necessarily a drawback. So what's interesting also is relating this integration constant, which we can estimate, to the, this local relative Kullback-Libler information criteria, which is a notion of time varying relative distance from the truth. So this is exactly equal to the distance at time t, and this will be estimated for every point in time as part of our procedure. So this gives us as a byproduct, a sense of how distant from the truth our densities are. And we can also, by just doing very simple substitution and application of the law of iterated expectations, we can show that this relative distance is this expectation of eta t. And if you remember in the simple example, that eta t was a quadratic form, so this by construction is always greater than zero or equal to zero. And this is true in general. So we can show that this is not just true in the example, but in general, we, we have that the projected density, this means is weakly closer to the truth than the original density, provided the moment condition is true naturally. So this tells us that we're doing the right thing, it's not an arbitrary procedure, what we're doing, if the moment condition is true, is producing something which has a, has an overall density is more accurate. So the theory for this is not new. In fact, we are simply adapting the eye-projection theory, which has been around for a long, long time. And this has been used in macro econometrics and also in macro econometrics, we discovered, unfortunately, quite recently, this paper where we thought we reinvented the wheel essentially. But we're adapting it to out-of-sample density forecasting and we're formalizing the parameter estimation part of it. And also, we showed that the projected density is actually preferable, in the sense it's more accurate than the original density forecast. Of course, we have to be careful about how we evaluate, how we judge accuracy in this context. And it turns out that because of this Kullback-Libler, the measure of accuracy is this logarithmic scoring rule, which I used in a previous paper with Gianni Misano. So this tells us that we are doing something that is meaningful, in, in principle. So in practice, how does this work? So we're trying to see, this is just an illustration, so we're not claiming that this is what everyone should start doing from, you know, tomorrow at central banks, but we have some quite interesting results. So here, we, we take this overly studied data set by Stock and Watson, which have, you know, about a hundred and fifty papers have been written on. And essentially, this looks at a large data set of US macro and financial variables. This is very widely investigated. And the general conclusion from this literature is that there is no unique a-theoretical method that emerges as the winning, the most accurate method. So generally speaking, factor models, Bayesian VAR, forecast combination are comparable to each other. So we choose a Bayesian VAR as representing the current state of the art as the best a-theoretical method for forecasting the Stock and Watson data set. So in the sense, we're already taking the best as, you know, state-of-the-art, non-theoretical method, and we ask whether we can further improve it because of this Bayesian VAR is absolutely devoid of any theory, can we improve its performance, which is already the best possible we can do by incorporating a simple Euler equation? So in some sense, we're trying to do something quite ambitious. But it's, it's a relevant question regardless of what we find. So the starting point is, we're doing this application by Gianni Lenz and Brimincieri, which is a bvar four with a variant of the Littmann prior. And we consider both a small or a medium VAR, I'll just present the results for the small VAR on GDP, inflation, federal funds rate, yields and consumption. And we do an out-of-sample exercise, as they do, which involves recursively estimating this Bayesian VAR on a rolling window of eighteen quarters, and we consider different forecast horizons. So our goal is to compare the performance of the Bayesian VAR, which again, I repeat, is the best currently available, to a tilted Bayesian VAR, which simply incorporates an Euler equation. And these are Euler equation on non-durable consumption and real yield calibrated. So we'll be calibrating these alpha and beta parameters. So naturally, one can start asking whether these are plausible calibrations or not. And the first test to do before one goes ahead and does this would be to test whether this Euler equation is satisfied or is not rejected by the data at this calibration. It turns out, perhaps because of, you know, problems with the data, the Euler equation is not rejected for any of these points, which clearly opens up some questions of whether this economic restriction really is true or not. So the idea is that it only makes sense to do this procedure if we believe in the theoretical restriction. So, and the first question to, to, that will tell us whether there is any point in doing this is, do the Bayesian VAR densities already satisfy the Euler equation, in which case there will be no scope for tilting or for improvement? So I'll show in this figure the, the Euler equation errors from the Bayesian VAR at different forecast horizons. So just look at the, the top one, which is about the small model, this five, five-dimensional Bayesian VAR. So these are Euler equation errors at the different forecast horizons, one, four and eight steps ahead. So we see evidence that, particularly at the short horizon, there are Euler equation errors. So when one considers a multivariate normal coming from a Bayesian VAR, this density does not satisfy the Euler equation, particularly in the first part of the sample. So this suggests that there would be scope for improvement, particularly at the short-term horizon, whereas at the medium and long-term horizon, already the Euler equation errors are fairly small. So this suggests that there's, there's not much point in trying to incorporate them. Even further, perhaps there will be a correction of the small initial error, but overall, we don't expect to see a major improvement. So, as I said, we expect to see some gains, particularly for the short-term horizon. And then we want to confirm whether this is actually confirmed true by looking at forecast accuracy comparisons. So we'll be looking at both the general, overall density forecast performance of the Bayesian VAR and the tilted Bayesian VAR by looking at this logarithmic scoring rule, which tells us which one of the, of the two densities over the out-of-sample period, on average, had a higher score, in the sense of assigning more probability, higher probability to the observation that actually occurred. And then we're looking, not only at the overall density forecast performance, but also we focus on the, on the point forecast performance by looking at the standard mean-squared comparisons, four-point forecast. So these are the not overwhelmingly good results for the density forecast comparisons. So these are test statistics from a test that I have with Gianni Misano, which essentially, you should look for something that is greater than 1.96 and you don't see it. So this means that the two are indistinguishable from each other. So overall, in terms of density forecast performance, there is not much evidence that actually this tilting helps for the overall five variables, multivariate density. So then, we, and I want to emphasize that this is the only one for which the theory suggests we should see, the, the theory only tells us that the tilted density should be better, at least in population, than the tilted, than the a-theoretical density. So the next comparison that we do is actually on point forecast performance, for which the theory doesn't really tell us anything, whether we should expect the tilted density to do better in terms of point forecast performance. So this is really an empirical question. So these are standard mean-squared error ratios. So for people that have done a lot of forecasting, like I've done for many years, so the first thing that you look for in these tables is something greater than one and some stars that indicate that this is significantly, when you do, you know, the ratio of two mean-squared forecast errors, you're looking for something significantly greater than one. And normally, in the best case... And normally, in the best case scenario, you find numbers that are around 1.5, 1.8. So when we saw this, I immediately thought, okay, there's definitely some bug, you know, there's some error here, because these are numbers that are really large. So this is telling us that for the forecast of inflation, which is notoriously hard to forecast, just simply incorporating an Euler equation into a Bayesian VAR, which is already pretty good method for forecasting, at the short-term horizon, as we would expect, there's a massive improvement in forecast performance. So these ratios are really, really large. So we have checked the code, and we don't think it's a it's a it's a mistake. So there are several things that, and we're looking for explanations now, and I can't say that we have found exactly the the most convincing explanation for this stunningly beautiful performance. But we think that there are possibly a couple of things that are going on here, is that we're starting from a small dimensional VAR, so this is not necessarily a great model. So the Stock and Watson have have shown that you need many more variables to forecast inflation better. So perhaps it's the benchmark, which is not the best benchmark we could be choosing, but this is still a fairly reasonable method. Five-dimensional Bayesian VAR is quite standard in forecasting circles. The second possible explanation is that the Euler equation is essentially in in imposing some co-integrating relationships, some sort of a trend relationships between the two variables, whereas the Bayesian VAR does not, since it shrinks towards a random walk, does not incorporate any cross-equation restrictions. So there might be something like that going on. But we think this is quite interesting, even though we don't think this is the end of it. One shouldn't just go ahead and start forecasting inflation with this method from tomorrow, perhaps. But it's worth investigating further. So to try and understand what's going on here, why are these projected densities more accurate? We can look on just on this one step ahead, we can try to look at what's going on in terms of the relative forecast errors between the two densities, the two models. And this is the picture that shows, you know, positive errors, these are the errors of the Bayesian VAR in absolute value minus the errors of the tilted Bayesian VAR. So we see that this is particularly, there's a massive improvement in the early part of the sample, whereas in more recent times, it's not so clear that incorporating these Euler equations really improves forecasting performance that much. We can further see in terms of this visual representation what's going on here. For example, can we look at some of these periods when we have some really big improvements in forecast accuracy and try to understand how the tilting modifies our forecast densities? And here, I just chose one particular date, for example, when there was a big improvement in the tilted performance. So these are draws from the original Bayesian VAR, the histogram, and the the vertical line is the actual realization of inflation in that period, and the dashed line is the tilted density. So we see that this tilting, in this case, is just a shifting of the forecast for CPI, which happens to be centered exactly at the true realization. So in this case, this the tilting really eliminates the the forecast error from the Bayesian VAR. So just to conclude, and take it right on time. So the idea of this paper was that when we think about economic theory, you know, economic theory imposes restrictions on on joint distributions, which are, they take economically the form of nonlinear movement conditions. So the theory does not immediately and obviously and simply provide multivariate conditional densities that can be used for forecasting. So what people do is to modify the model and end up with an approximate version of the theoretical model, which in fact does not perform very well. So we advocate for perhaps, instead of discarding theory entirely and focusing on simply data-driven reduce-form methods, to find a middle ground, which is starting from already what we know works in practice in a theoretical model and incorporating these moment restrictions by using the simple, quite simple and doable projection methods, which guarantee that every point in time, we obtain some conditional densities that are coherent with theory. They're not the true correctly specified densities, but they are, they work well in practice and incorporate theory. So and in 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 expectation, they will result in better forecast performance if the restrictions are true naturally. So we think that this is a flexible methodology, because it allows also to include only a subset of the restrictions that we believe in, and one that can also adopt, start including a few restrictions and ask which one of the restrictions are more useful. And I think it might help us, at the very least, understand if theory plays a role in forecasting and whether we should incorporate it or not.
Great, thanks very much. Thank you. Okay, the idea is that speakers will speak, the discussion will take place, and then we'll open up the conference. So you have a question from the University of Danville, speak on likelihood-based dynamic action analysis for measurements and forecasting.
Okay, thank you very much. This work that is jointly carried out by Boris Zumbaka, a former PhD student of mine. And this is a work that is investigating dynamic factor models for the purpose of macroeconomic forecasting. So economic forecasting, as it already has been discussed, is and is and is used in, well, the the methods that are available for doing macroeconomic forecasting are widespread. So people have been using univariate time series models, Poole-Jenkins, ARMA models, unobserved component models, dynamic regression models, multivariate generalizations of these, so VAR models and FIML. And it's always very surprising, if you look at these forecasting studies, that it's still very hard to beat the AR1 or the AR4 model in forecasting. So that is sometimes quite frustrating for working hard on these, well, relatively more difficult models to estimate and then also then to generate the forecast from these models. And then just only marginally beating the AR2 or the AR4 forecast. So it's there still, in my view and world, to to win in this area of of research. But there has been, as was also suggested in the previous presentation, there has been a lot of research on macroeconomic forecasting, especially in the direction of dynamic factor models, principal components analysis, Bayesian VARs, et cetera. So I'm also sort of looking at these models, but more from sort of the basic idea of doing econometrics with these type of models. So I'm trying to estimate these models by maximum likelihood estimation. And since these dimensions are relatively large dimensions, you have to estimate many coefficients in this in 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 these type of models. So there are some sort of problems there, which I'd like to tackle in this in this paper. Well, the most of the motivations of doing forecasting is GDP, which is a key economic variable. So when I show some results, they're mostly directed to the forecasting of GDP, although I will not present many empirical forecasts, just concentrating on the on the on the technology. But GDP, that is sort of the main motivation, important for policymakers and challenging for forecasting. As I said, it is very hard to to get a good forecasting. So the default methods from at which the benchmark methods on which you need to compare these new models are like random walks and auto-regression type of forecast. Unified forecasting is also possible to do based on trans-cycle decomposition, so unobserved component models, in which we look at macroeconomic time series and decompose them into trends, cycles, AR2, so basically non-stationary dynamics and stationary dynamics, and then model them explicitly inside the model and then use them for the forecasting of these models. Usually, this works sort of quite well if you have enough observations over time. So if you have quarterly 15, 20 years of observations, or you have monthly observations of a number of of years, then the the estimation of such models and also the forecasting is going quite well. But if you look at sort of European data, where the data is sometimes for certain countries not available for so long, then these models become sort of limited, because there's just not enough time dimension to 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 characterize the dynamics in the time series to make proper forecasting, yeah, well, to do proper forecasting. And then I think also the the purpose or the introduction of of having more macroeconomic variables can help a lot in the forecasting and also in the decomposition of the time series. So here, we we focus not only on the level of the time series, but also on the growth. And usually, if you look at the growth of the time series, the data is much more like stationary. So most of the features of the non-stationarity dynamics have been diffused away, and then you only have to concentrate on the stationary part. And that is also usually what people focus on in macroeconomic forecasting. They focus more, first, they transform the data dynamically to make them stationary, and then usually stationary time series is transformed stationary time series for the forecasting of of some key variables. So what we do in this paper, we basically adopt that approach and rather not looking at at GDP itself, but at the growth of, well, year-to-year growth or quarter-to-quarter growth. In in these type of models, it seems to that that quarterly year on the year growth is sort of, you 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 keep more more serial correlation in the data, so it feels that from a time series perspective, that you can do more work. So so that's why I prefer to do, to look at year on year, so delta for. Well, once we look at unobserved component model, also if you do macroeconomic forecasting based on AR models and you have unbalanced datasets, or you have missing observations, then usually what people do is to rely on Kalman filter methods. So they put the model, the linear Gaussian model, into a stage-based form, and then use a Kalman filter for the parameter estimation, and then generate forecast via signal extraction. And that is also the approach that we take here. Kalman filters are fine for univariate time series, so for a single Yt, as soon as they become sort of vectors, like four, five, six, seven, then you can still deal with them just as in a vector auto-regression framework. But as soon as these dimensions become higher, 10, 50, hundreds, 500, then things become much harder to 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 apply them. And so then just the dimension of running the Kalman filter is just so high that it is just basically not feasible anymore to use these models for practical purposes. Well, the challenge is then, well, can we not sort of see whether we can modify these methods, that we are still able to work with these high-dimensional time series that are nowadays used so often in 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 macroeconomic forecasting? So the whole idea is, can we not incorporate sort of more information into the forecasting of some target variables? So just using univariate time series is a bit limited. Information in related time series can be used in the analysis. Interrelations can help in the exploration of the dynamic relations between the time series. Economic theory can be verified, as just has been illustrated. Simultaneous effects to variables when events occur, so maybe you can identify exogenous effects or intervention effects much better if you have more serious that react to certain events in the economy or certain policy changes. So forecasting should be generally more precise, at least that is what you would think. But of course, the question is always, does it? Because as I said, it is very hard to beat an AR1 in its out-of-sample forecasting performance. So there are still some challenging exercises for practical or for empirical research. So how can we incorporate massive macroeconomic panel datasets into our forecasting plan? Well, one basic idea is, of course, just to take a selection of Xt's. So you just take a number of Xt's, and you just put them in to the right-hand side of your model. Possibly you can lag them for forecasting if they're supposed to be exogenous, then it is not very good just to have them as contemporaneous, but just having them only as lagged, and that is then more sensible for doing forecasting. So we just include them as lagged variables and then see whether they help in forecasting. Of course, if you have 500 time series in your panel, then you might wonder, well, which time series is then best for incorporating them into my model, because putting all 500 of them is a bit is a bit much. So which Xt to choose, or which subset of the macroeconomic panel can you choose? Well, there is, in in that area of dynamic modeling, there's sort of a methodology called autometrics, where you basically can have hundreds or thousands or 10,000s of variables inside the macroeconomic panel, and then an automatic procedure will select the most appropriate variables that that can be used in in forecasting. So that is one solution to to adopt. And another option is VAR or Bayesian VARs. But then the problem is there, just that the dimensions become an issue. And in the Bayesian VARs, the shrinkage will sort of solve that 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 these dimensions, it will be solved. But then, of course, it is still an a heavy procedure to for the estimation of these Bayesian VARs. Then the idea of Stock and Watson comes in. So just reduce the thousand-dimensional macroeconomic panel data by just computing principal components. So you look at the eigenvalue structure into the database, you construct the 10, well, you construct the 10 principal components that are associated with the 10 highest eigenvalues, and then just include them, just what I did before with the individual axes, just include them into your equation, and then do the forecasting based on these on 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 this model, just by including these principal components as exogenous variables. Such principal components can also be used in basically any model, so any model that can treat regression effects, you can just plug them in. So also in a decomposition model, and we also have done some 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 trial and error on these type of principal components to see whether they help us in the forecasting of the target variable, especially when you have only a small time dimensional, if you only have a small time dimension in 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 data, so the time panel is is small. The problem with these principal components is that they do not involve the Yt's itself, so they are just, it is just imposed, you you just assume that the Ys and the Xs, the panel database, are highly correlated with each other. And so and then for every variable in the big database that is sort of vaguely correlated with the Yt's, that will help then in 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 forecasting the the Yt's itself. But for the constructions of these pieces, the Yt's are not involved, they are totally separate. So you basically only focus on these axes. And another matter, if you just look at these principal components, once you have constructed them and you look them on the pitch, they're always very noisy. And while I've always have learned that if you have a lot of noise in the data and you just put them in your model, you're also, the forecasting becomes much more volatile. And so the uncertainty around your forecast also increases. So it also introduces a lot of noise into your forecasting model. And whether that is sort of always good for especially density forecast, that is an is is also a matter that needs to be looked at. So the principal components can be quite noisy in these cases. So an other option is then, well, just put them all into the model. So just have the have the big panel, that is, all these axes, just put them on the left-hand side, and just see them as a factor model. And that's basically what is written here. So here, I basically redefine the 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 small Yt. And what I'm now meaning by this, by the small Yt, is basically having all the Yt's, so the target variables, and the big macroeconomic panel inside one big vector Yt. So now, from this slide onwards, the Yt, the small Yt, is typically a very large observation factor. It can be something like a dimensional hundreds or 2, 300. And then, well, when Yt's still of a moderate dimension, then in the literature, you find examples where they have fitted these dynamic factor models and also have used them for forecasting, but also for policy analysis, because as soon as you put some structure in the factor loading matrix, you can also interpret some of these factors. And so they can also have some economic meaning in 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 the model. So this is then the dynamic factor model, which I will study for the rest of this presentation. And the lambda matrix is this factor loading matrix. It's also a huge matrix, of course. If you have hundreds of time series, then also that dimension is like 100, and the number of columns is just the number of factors that that you choose. So if you if you choose about five factors in the model, then that matrix is 100 by five, so it is a huge factor loading matrix. Well, you can estimate that factor loading matrix by maximum likelihood. Of course, the dimensions are pretty large for estimation, you have a 500-dimensional thing. Well, if you have score information, then that will help during the search, sort of Newton-Rapha method with score information and with some approximate Hessian information, that will help you in sort of making of estimating these factor loadings. But you can also just impose the eigenvectors into this loading matrix. So then you don't have to estimate them, you just impose the eigenvectors into this lambda, in the factor loading matrix. And then there's work by Gian by Gianone and Reigling and others, where And then uh, there's work by um, by Gian, uh, by Gianonna and uh, Reiling and others, where they uh, show that uh, if you just impose these eigenuh, vectors into the lambda, you still get consistent estimates for your uh, dynamic factors. And so you can have this option that if you want to estimate them by maximum likelihood, well, you can wonder whether you want to do that, because I'm not claiming here that this is all of like a model for the data generation process, that is not really like a data gen- uh, generation process. So whether it is so important to have maximum likelihood estimation for all these coefficients, that is just an uh, a matter of debate, I think it's just here, if you use them for forecasting, you also want to see whether if you use maximum likelihood estimates, do then the forecasting prove or not? Or does it make no difference whether you use the eigenvectors in the, in the factor loading matrix or whether you use the uh, maximum likelihood estimates? And so that is sort of a discussion that you can have when, once you look at these uh, dynamic vector models. But again, I will not sort of concentrate so much on the estimation of the lambdas and on other uh, dynamic features of these dynamic factors. I will just focus on how can we forecast, how can we do signal extraction if the Y T dimension becomes very large? But this is big literature and basically if you look at models that have estimated dynamic vector models and we've got many uh, references here, this is just a, a selection, as early as in the nineteen seventies by uh, by, by Watson and Engel and Engel and Watson and Shomwe and Stover. They already estimated these type of models in a sort of smaller dimensional uh, framework. And so these models are well tested in the empirical uh, literature, also in economics and in finance, so a lot of people have looked at this type of models. But no, the main question is what will happen if this Y T dimension really increases beyond the fifty and hundred dimension? So consider a basic example of dynamic vector model, so this is really the most basic example of, yeah, the most basic idea of the model. Is that you just have uh, on the left hand side, the measurement equation, that the, the factors and the mapping then to the observations. Here, Y T is typically large, F T is typically small and F T plus one is then the updating equation, basically the VAR one can also be a VAR two or a VAR three, just how lengthy you think you need the dynamics to be for the uh, appropriate forecasting equation. But here, I just, for illustrative purposes, I just take a VAR one. And here, the loading matrix is uh, lambda still, the upsilones and the xi Ts are, well, here, I I say they are normally uh, distributed. But if you don't believe that these things can be normally distributed, then I'm happy just to take off the normality assumption and then just instead of calling this the maximum likelihood, I call it the quasi-maxima- uh, maximum likelihood. So it basically, then you only use the criterion for the estimation and that criterion is then the uh, Gaussian likelihood function. Well, can you always estimate all these coefficients? No, you have to, there's always an issue in these vector models about uh, identification, which coefficients can you identify and which cannot? Well, the most sort of uh, simple way of uh, getting around that is just to impose a certain variance matrix uh, for the disturbances of the uh, auto regressive updating steps, so the xi, xi Ts. And when that variance is sort of uh, in, when that variance restriction is imposed, that the, the, the final equation, then the full uh, uh, factor loading matrix can be identified. Well, of course, you can also impose the factor loading matrix by eigenvectors, but if you want to estimate them, you still can estimate the, estimate the full um, uh, factor loading matrix if you impose that uh, that constraint. In other words, we just um, assume that the vectors are standardized and so that they all have uh, a variance one. So this P by one data vector is then generated by this uh, factor model. We are possibly interested in a much larger cross-section dimension than the time dimension, so the time dimension can be relatively small. Estimates should now concentrate on only the factor loading matrix and the, the auto regressive coefficient matrix for the dynamics. But first, we just concentrate on only just doing the signal extraction, the estimation of the factors and then the forecasting of F T and Y T for given values of the uh, other uh, uh, coefficient matrices. Well, we put these things sort of in state space formulation, because as soon as I do that, I can sort of claim the generality, that I can deal with any type of dynamics of any type of structure in the time series. So basically making that switch from this very basic model into the more general state space fr- framework, your only motivation is just that then everything is fairly uh, generically formulated. And so then I can easily switch from an, an, a cyclical process for the factors to a VAR four or an, or a seasonal process for the factors, whatever. So that's why I sort of now switch into this more general form and I basically s- uh, put, instead of a lambda, I put a Z uh, uh, a matrix, which is now basically the loading matrix, but in front of an, a state vector and the state vector contains the F T, contains all the dynamic features of the F T, but then it is possibly somewhat more extended and so it's somewhat a bigger vector, just to allow for all the dynamics in the uh, in the factors. So I'm focusing now on this notation, here again, Y T is, has a typical large dimension and the state itself, alpha T, has then a typically small dimension. But you can see the structure, that has not changed, that is exactly the same type of uh, structure, you have the measurement equation for the Ys and you have the updating equations for the state. Well, and in this framework, you can do likelihood evaluation via the Kalman filter, so you do the one step hat prediction errors and then you get the likelihood function and that is just like for any RMA model, you can always do a prediction RT composition of the time series process and then get the likelihood function. And another thing what you can get is the estimation of the states or the estimation of the factors, so these F Ts or these alphas, these can be estimated by the Kalman filter smoother. And uh, well, it is just on what type of data you want to conditioning on, if you only condition on the past data, you have the predicted states, the ones that are computed by the Kalman filter. If you want to condition on all the data, so you just want to do smoothing, you just want to take all the data into account for the estimation of the factors, you call that smoothing. So then you use a Kalman filter and smooth up for that. But the whole idea is here that if you want to do that, you need to work with a high dimensional Kalman filter set of equations, because the Y Ts are so big. And that is something we like to avoid and that's why very often these Kalman filter methods are dismissed, because P becomes just too large to be uh, to, well, uh, so, become too large, because the method is not feasible anymore when P is becoming too large. And so it's just a problem if the dimension is too high. Well, what can we do, we, well, we can do a transformation of the data and the transformation of the data is basically doing it via a regression. And that is, I think, the key insight to uh, to, to this uh, development of making the Kalman filter feasible, is by first looking at, at, at a data transformation. Well, as you know, in likelihood analysis, you can always do a data transformation. And you have the likelihood, you do a data transformation, the only adjustment what you have to do for the likelihood is the Jacobian term. You have to lo- log Jacobian term and if you uh, adjust that uh, term there, then you have the exact likelihood for the Ys. So I can always transform the data as long as the transformation is of uh, is 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 non-singular and so I do it full rank. So if I make a transformation of the data, I do, I do that with a matrix that is full rank, then I don't lose any data and I still have the exact likelihood function. And this is all very sensible. Well, here, I show you that if you do it clever, if, if a subset of the transformation is for example, this matrix P and this P is constructed like the, basically the GLS uh, uh, mapping matrix to get the GLS estimator. And so basically what you do is you have, if Y T is big and alpha T is small, you have enough data to estimate alpha just only using the Y T. I don't need a time series dimension, I only need the cross-section dimension. So at time T, I can just estimate the state using all the data that is, that is on the left hand side, because I have enough degrees of freedom. So I can first do a cross-sectional regression analysis and that's what I call the matrix P. Basically, I transform the data, P, using the Z and the uh, well, basically the Z as the exogenous variable. Well, then I do a GLS, because the upsilones have a variance matrix A, so GLS is then probably more uh, efficient to do that, so I use all the data in optimal form in uh, in 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 the cross-sectional estimate. And but basically, I see it as a transformation of the data. So I transform all the data by pre-multipliering it with the matrix P. And if I do it on the left hand side of the model, I should also do it on the right hand side of the model. So the model for the transformed data becomes very simple, it is just alpha hat T and the transformed data is equal to alpha T, the state vector itself, plus E T. And the E T is a small disturbance uh, vector of the same dimension of the state with a certain variance matrix, the, 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 the usual X prime max inversion. That's just for the beta hat uh, uh, O L S uh, variance, as, variance of the O L S estimation. And then I still keep the same dynamics for the state, because that is unaffected, the state itself is just unaffected. So just transform the data into a much smaller dimension, which I can handle much easier within the Kalman filter. And so now I, I apply the Kalman filter to deal with the time series dimension, but in a very small dimension. Well, you might now say, well, wait a minute, you only have, transformed the data in, using a matrix P that has only a small dimension, it is not a non-singular matrix, that is only a rank K of a rank P in this case. So what do you do with all the other data? Well, as we know, in regression, we have this matrix M, the O L S residual matrix. And that matrix M is always such that M X is equal to zero, and so it is orthogonal on the space of X. So here, there should also be a matrix M such that M P is equal to zero, that's just a residual matrix. So I know there's a whole, N minus K, because the rank of this identity matrix is N minus K, in this case, P minus R, R, P minus R. So I have a whole set of linear combination that can fill up, fill up the, the whole of the remaining N minus K dimension for this matrix A, which is all orthogonal on the state. So I can transform the data in part where the state is not apparent. And so the state vector does not appear in that part of the transformed of the data, so I don't need to look at it, I know it is orthogonal on that part of the data. So I only need to focus for the estimation of the state on this small dimensional model. And I can forget about all the other observations, because this is the sufficient information that I need for the estimation of the state. Well, that is sort of the idea, the, the underlying idea, why you can still work with massive number of data on the left hand side, but just by doing the appropriate uh, dimension re- reduction using type of a GLS transformation, you can get away with most of the data and only sort of use the data that is relevant for the dynamics. And that is in a small dimension and then the Kalman filter can easily handle like five, six, seven time series uh, in one go. And so that is the basic idea. So it's basically a two-step method for estimating the factors and for computing the likelihood, well, I will come back to the likelihood computation in just a moment. But basically what we advocate is just a two-step, first the cross-sectional step and then the time series step in a small dimension to do all the smoothing and filtering, the forecasting of the Ys, because once you have the forecast of the alpha hats, you automatically have the forecast of the Ys just by using the first equation here on the upper left corner. That's just the Y T Z alpha T, so if you have a forecast for alpha, you also have a forecast for Ys, just using that mapping. And so it is all um, included. Well, transforming the observation factor, well, just to formalize this all, because this is all a little bit of sort of ad hoc is the way I explained it, so we just introduce this matrix A and this matrix A is then the non-singular matrix, we divide it into an A L and in an A H matrix, so A L is basically the P matrix and A H is a huge matrix. The, the, the N minus K, this is all orthogonal on, on the state. And then we say there's always a transformation such that the lower dimensional part has the states in them, the higher dimensional part doesn't have the state, the two things, and because M times P is also zero, and so the two parts are orthogonal upon each other, so I can treat the two equations separately. So I can just treat the likelihood evaluations separately, I can do the estimation of the state separately based on the smaller model, so everything is uh, is covered. These are then the official conditions for the transformation, A has to be full rank, because you don't want to lose information. Uh, the parts of the A Hs and the A Ls, and the trans- the, the partition of the matrix should be orthogonal, so you can treat the two equations separately. And then the uh, space of, the row space of the uh, large part should be orthogonal on the column space of the smaller part and that the smaller part is then uh, the Z part, because the Z that is where we base the regression on, that's basically the X matrix. And then the lemma is that there's always a matrix A L, you can always construct and 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 P of a R number of rows in this A matrix such that uh, C Z prime, such that A L is equal to C Z prime H inversion for any non-singular matrix C. So it is not a unique matrix A L, it can be anything, so I can take the C matrix, it can be an identity matrix and then I can also take, instead of doing the GLS transformation, I can also just take the transformation of Z prime H inversion. So you can basically take any type of uh, transformation as long as that is sort of uh, uh, orthogonal upon the Z space. So uh, as far as signal extraction and forecasting is concerned, we don't have to uh, compute A Hs. Of course, you might say, well, we have this M matrix in the regression and the M matrix is very easy, that is just I minus P. But just to construct the unique N minus R rows uh, from the M matrix that is orthogonal on A L, there's always, always a pain. It's just a, it can be done, but it's numerically, you basically have to do many inversions just to get them. So what we try to avoid in this analysis is to uh, is to uh, avoid the, what we try to do in this analysis to avoid the computation of this uh, A H matrix, A H matrix. And so we don't want to compute that one, because that is the nasty one. And for likelihood evaluation, we then just um, um, uh, because you can imagine that after that transformation, computing this um, um, uh, uh, Jacobian term, we still need to have this A H matrix for one reason or the other, we just need to have this A H matrix. But now we try to uh, do likelihood evaluation without the need of computing this A H matrix. And the only additional condition for that, what we need is that we just use A H and A L in such a way that is covariance matrix A H, H, A H prime, so the variance of the uh, residual after the transformation, that that uh, determinant is equal to one. So that determinant is equal to one and you can always sort of scale this transformation such that that happens, so it is not a restriction, it's just an assumption, I can always scale a transformation such that this uh, will happen. So with that additional condition, then I can show that the likelihood can also be computed without the A H matrix. And so we don't need to have this uh, A H matrix uh, at all. Well, for example, the uh, log determinant term that you need to compute, as you can see, can also be avoided by computing this A H uh, matrix, because in the end, we only need the H matrix, because the A H is now equal to one, so they cancel out, we don't have to worry about it. So with all these sort of identities, you can sort of avoid the computation of A H. And the same for the likelihood evaluation, again, you can, after the transformation, you can separate the data totally and just compute the likelihood for the small part, compute the likelihood for the bigger part and then just add them together and then the log determinant term. And so that can be done, because they are orthogonal upon each other. For the lower part, that still depends on the state vector, so we need the Kalman filter to compute the likelihood for that part. The part that does not involve the uh, uh, state, that is then just the uh, regression type of likelihood, that's just an um, a Gaussian likelihood, well, if you've seen Gaussianity. So it is just a Gaussian likelihood, the, the log of A uh, sigma H, that is now uh, zero, because we have a huge, we have found a matrix A such that this A H is equal to one, the determinant. So that term cancels out, so we only have the quadratic term and the log two pi terms in there. Well, here you can see that we still need this sigma H, that is this sort of matrix that we want to avoid to compute. But then there's a lemma that can show that uh, that quadratic term can also be expressed on the right hand side, basically the squared uh, just the squared O L S residuals, the E T, you can, you recognize the uh, the GLS residual in there. And that is for any matrix C, so for any type of transformation, even if you choose another C, you can still use this uh, uh, GLS residual. Because basically in the computations, the C uh, cancels out and that is sort of in this uh, proof, you basically do some mappings and then you show that as long as things are orthogonal, you can show that uh, the C matrix doesn't matter and the A H uh, matrices, they turn out to be just the M matrix, the residual maker in the space of Z. So that is just um, uh, some matrix algebra that you, that is sort of not the standard matrix algebra, there are, there are some mappings that we usually don't do. But to show that this uh, lemma is true, you need to do sort of like a non-standard linear mapping. But then in the end, you can get this likelihood evaluation in a very efficient way, just by doing the Kalman filter on this lower dimensional part of the uh, uh, model and the remaining part, just the um, GLS residual that you get from the cross-sections, take the square uh, square terms, sum them up and you have the likelihood function basically. And well, you can imagine that this is all very computable and then the dimension of, the, the dimension of the macroeconomic panel, that is not relevant anymore, even if that increases very highly, as long as the state vector remains the same dimension, then the computations are still basically the same. And that is, yeah, that is just an acute result. And that is, yeah, that is just an acute result. So just to show that this thing can also be done in practice, we also use the macroeconomic panel of Stockholm-Watson. Originally, we took it from the 2005 paper, I think in the 2008 paper, they have extended it slightly, I think. But these are, I think, the basic data sets that most people use in this economic panel. These are the estimated seven factors, so we take this 150 or 132 time series, have seven factors, and then estimate the whole model by maximum likelihood. Also, the lambda and the, and the phi, the AR coefficients are also estimated by maximum likelihood. Are also estimated by maximum likelihood. And that is, again, that is feasible, because we use the analytical score functions. So if you have an analytical score, then, yeah, it is so easy to estimate the score, and then you can just doing some updating. And even if the dimension is high, high, it's basically just a regression type of updating to get the factor loadings. So this model was estimated in a matter of 10 minutes or so. So it is not, not very hard. And then you get the R-squares for the seven factors, just to indicate how we can interpret these factors. So is there some clustering of macroeconomic variables that can be identified with these factors? These are the typical pictures that Stockholm-Watson produced in their original papers. But also in this case, we can just compute the official R-squares measures by doing the regressions between the factors and the, and the original data set. So you can see that the first factor is, is the real, the real factor, all the real economic variables are in the A-part. The third factor is associated with the interest rates. And the fifth factor is associated with the prices. And so there are all kinds of associations that you can make with these factors. So in that sense, you can interpret some of these factors from a macroeconomic point of view. So we have presented, I think, a feasible method for the likelihood-based dynamic factor analysis. Yeah, I think it's feasible. For incorporating many macroeconomic variables, there's still a lot of work to be done. So what we do at the moment is also looking at mixed frequencies, so quarterly, monthly data. Looking at leading indicators, can you sort of track leading indicators from these factors? But it's all much more empirical work that we do just to see, because you have now these apparatus to estimate all these models, so you can impose certain constraints on the loadings, and you can look at lagging of these factors. We can, well, sort of like other ideas that we can incorporate into this setting, and that is what we do at the moment.
Thanks very much indeed. So the discussion is Brendan McKay from the University of Berkeley.
Okay, so I'll go in reverse order. We have a likelihood-based paper by Sim Yan. So despite his great presentation, let me remind you again what he's done. We have this FACA model here. And the whole point, excuse the change in notation, I was working off an N in the paper rather than a P in the other slide, so don't worry too much about notation. The whole point about this is that we have a great dimension in the Y, potentially small dimension in the F. That's what makes it interesting. And one of the nice things about the approach is it decides to treat this as a linear state space model. And why would you want to do that? Well, we know an awful lot about linear state space models back since, well, since the 60s, and they're putting rockets on the moon. And we can compute all sorts of things, including likelihoods, forecasts. And this is done with a set of recursions, which is known as the Kalman filter, or depending who you talk to, maybe Kalman-Booth filter. But suffice it to say, once we get it into this form, we can do an awful lot of things. But if you look at the equations that you need to update via the Kalman filter, then there's this matrix F that's floating around in there, and it has a dimension which is now the large N. And the problem for you is you need the inverse of this F, right? Which is now a large thing to invert, and not only that, you need it at every time period. So it's not just as if you can do it offline and just do it once, you got to do it at every time period. And it's a very, very neat, very elegant technique that's presented in the paper, which does a dimensional reduction, basically using the cross-section of the data to do a dimensional reduction, and then just do a basic linear state space model on the reduced thing. And it really is very, very neat. Another thing that's nice about the paper is it's really comprehensive in the way that it deals with things. So it doesn't just say, well, here's a little bit of a likelihood, you can do smoothing, you can do likelihood, you can forecast. Sim Yan didn't mention it, but you can do diagnostics in this context with one step ahead forecast. There's even a mention of the Bayesian approach, and there's even empirical example. And there are some brave conclusions too. In the empirical section, he essentially says, well, by the way, it doesn't really work, but, you know, we need some extra things to do for, to get that very large-scale example to work well. So all in all, a very interesting paper. It's a very, very neat, clever idea, and really well-presented. Right, a couple of things that really worried me, especially I talked to my friends and that who do U-Bahn to work, can you really maximize over 1,000 parameters? I know there's an exact score there, which makes it a lot easier, but do you have multiple routes? Do you have this, do you have that? I wasn't sure. And I was wondering if you, it would help us if, in addition to the timing Monte Carlos, we had something in there about biases and M S Cs or something, just to get some idea that, in fact, you really, you really could actually do this. And if we were going to have a likelihood approach, how would they compare with these principal components estimates? I mean, the nice thing about this approach is it brings in the Y, but it's only differing from the principal components by little epsilon, isn't it? So it might be interesting just to see how they compare. In the empirical example in the paper, there's a certain complementarity in that the PC approach was used essentially to say, what kind of models are there, what kind of order of magnitude of factors should we possibly be dealing with? So that begs the question, I mean, could you do without that approach? I mean, in the sense of, would you be able to use just the likelihood approach and do all we need to do about the diagnostics, model selection, and so on? Or would you actually want to do it pragmatically, or even theoretically in a complementary way? Say, let me have a look, get me in the ballgame where I should be, and then let me use the likelihood. Are we limited to linear systems? Probably not. The thing is, if extended Kalman filter is just a way of taking the Taylor series expansion and linearizing everything, and then forgetting about all the error terms and the Taylor series approximation, and then you just apply a linear approach, instead of having your ordinary variables, just have the partial derivatives, and the function of the variables. And at that point, I presume, you can actually just do the whole thing based on a nonlinear filter. And while the theoreticians don't like nonlinear extended Kalman filters, in practice, they use a hell of a lot. So maybe it would be relatively straightforwardly, you could apply this to the extended Kalman filter. And if you're really worried by derivatives, maybe someone said the transformation would help you a lot in a way so you didn't have to calculate so many derivatives. Because if you have to calculate thousands of derivatives, it gets a little bit boring after a while, it's not all the same thing. Okay. So a couple of more things to think about. And these engineers like to do their filters in the back of a lorry in Afghanistan or somewhere, you know, on the tracking multiple targets, or people shooting at them. So they don't have access to servers and supercomputers. So they have something that's going to work in the back of the van. And at that point, they want to avoid matrix inversion entirely. Some little chip that lives in their machine or something cannot do matrix inversion. So they have a thing called a sequential Kalman filter. And that's sequential in the dimension of Y, not recursive in the dimension of T. And that allows you, effectively, to do a Kalman filter, updating each Y, so Y1, Y2, Y3, Y4, Y5, and you can do them all at one time. And this eliminates entirely matrix inversion out of Kalman filter algorithm. And in fact, every time you see a matrix inversion, it's just as now scaled up as it is. So I was wondering, then you could possibly block it, and you've probably got the option of blocks via what you've done. But would it be feasible to do it this way? Because it would also allow you then to look larger at the number of factors, rather than find yourself in the smaller ones. And if we're really getting into the possible then, this is speculation, I'm not, you know, how would this compare with indirect, I mean, indirect influence is the old simulated method of moments, all that kind of stuff. That's just a generic name for it. And ABC is just a Bayesian, approximate Bayesian computation for what we have called non-b likelihood-based difference. If you really had to get into the tougher areas, and you're kind of on the margins, would something that came out in the other direction, indirect influence or ABC, would that actually be helpful for some more insight there? Well, in summary, it is a very, very neat solution to a big problem. And I was delighted to read the paper. I apologize to Rafaela, that I don't have some slides for her, because we had a mix-up in the paper, and I didn't get to it till yesterday afternoon. So, so let me start. First, I started with something more technical, and then I brought the discussion out in case people in the audience wanted to commit. That tilt in density, right? As we ran with statistics for years, it's just a normalized or renormalized saddle point approximation. But it has often been around in the information theory paper, which, as he mentioned, they have shown, essentially it was your result, I think, proposition one, that that's a maximum entropy thing, right? And what it does is, it says, give me some density, which is like a forecast density, give me some restrictions that I want this thing to satisfy. Now it's like, I want what set of densities are the least informative? Least informed, not most informed, least informative by given the initial metric one that I start with, and then given these, the ready restrictions. Which is, in one sense, a great idea, because it's like a mini-match, you're now covering yourself for the worst case. Whereas your forecaster, it may not be the one that you want, it may not be the least informative one you want. You might think, oh, perhaps there are other dimensions which I might want to have a look at. Also, there may be other interpretations, and you hinted that, that these are really, you can interpret this stuff as an important sampler. And I think your normal example is exactly what you're doing, you're putting the means in the right place rather than kind of the wrong place. So you may get some nice interpretations if you think of it as an important sampler. I think it really is tricky when you, when you describe it as, you know, near the truth. People might believe the Euler equations, but they wouldn't believe you knew that these are not, so I might tone that one down a little bit. Right, and then on the, I really like the way this is going, because, you know, let's say you worked for a greater London council back in 2008, and someone said, give me a five-year forecast of what's going to happen. Well, you know, you could use all the data in the world, and you've never got a handle on what's going to happen next year in London, because London is a lighthouse, because it's all back around, right? Like, when we don't have data in the future by construction, well, we have a lot of information about the future. Because we know what the algorithm is going to do. We can look up, you know, council plans for who's going to build the road, who's going to build the house. So we have lots of information about the future. So if I would go further than you do, and say, well, how do I incorporate all the stuff I know about the future? Right, and that's when I would go back to the state space and the Bayesian version of the state space. With that, well, and even, you know, even Bayesian versions of methods of moments, generalized methods of moments, that's where I would go, because I really think unless we can start incorporating that kind of information, we'll never get not so much good marginal forecasts, but good forecasts for the central bankers. Because the central bankers are run by governments. And governments are asking them these questions, when will this crisis end? When? And what levers should I poke or not poke, or leave alone to make it faster? Or what should I leave alone, right, in order to not make it worse? None of this stuff can possibly even begin to answer this total motivating question for governments. You know, it's just all too back around. Whereas if we had, you know, some way of taking in the future information, which is not data, we may begin to have handle on what these guys want. And of course, we also like to, our unconditional forecasts, but that may even cough up some more money for us if they're actually perceived of actually being helpful.
Thank you very much, Brendan. So we have the speakers on the round and discussion today. So I think we'll have to get the speaker's response to Brendan, maybe there's another question from the audience. First of all, would you like to put to the speakers?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask some questions about the approach. In the, although the approach, I mean, this is probably the best way to make a connection. And this is very similar to what I said, you can buy this paper, you can get it from our collection. And they have had that discovery, where I was as well, they were developing a model with the A R model. You know, so is there some sense that there is, say, that you have improved upon that approach?
Yeah, well, improving, I just, this is just another thing that you can do is to respect the things. You can still sort of have the full law, you can still call it lighting. Nowadays, this respect law is always presented as in something like a respect law in forecasting. First with a cross-section, and then with a priori. But I was always going to continue, just have them still go through the model there. But it's still a simple way of lighting. And there is, seems to be some, first with the cross-section, and then practically, they have, they have a bar and factors. That is totally separate, because the work to do now, and maybe this is joining, to show that it's still better, respectful, still have the lighting, and it's on your own. But if the policy is that, what they improve is although you have to go with this, and so on, which is important. And I think it goes, if we spend an hour on this one, because the goal is more data, and then you can go with it, plus it's made that's the question. These are differences, because the mission, and these values, because it's more impressive.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Ah, I feel it's, well, why? Well, the first part is just the EU, the European, and the rest is. And the second part is, well, as you say, you can do a bar on the, on the, on the, on the panel. And it's a really good thing that you. Yeah, well, I don't get the software, I don't think so. You're a little bit of a standard, and you're a little bit of a software.
I'd like to Rafaela, actually, which is a kind of a, a question, which is how do you select your, your one condition? Especially if they're, they're formulated from a conditional expectation, from the, the variances. I'm very happy to respond to that.
For this is actually, is the conditional moment. Okay, yes, okay. So this procedure actually incorporates the Euler equation in its conditional version, so you don't have to.
Very interesting, did the information sector, the dimension of the.
Yes. You open up the usual criticism of the number of moment conditions, because obviously here, the really, the success of this, not theoretical, but in practice relies on keeping the dimension, the number of moment conditions small. So clearly, you would want to, you know, the usual criticism applies. The prior on the, on the moment conditions, no, this is conditioning on the, you know, the moment condition selected being true in the future. So in some sense, this is definitely going back to Brendan's point, which is a very valid criticism. You're putting a lot of faith on the exact moment conditions at the parameter being true. So I would be very cautious there. I think this is really, it lends itself to a very specific to general approach, which is start very simple and small, and ask whether simple information, and even Edna as kind of answering Brendan as well, which I think is a very valid point, very simple information in terms of simple moments from survey data, or maybe some, the Euler equation, I think, was not even a particularly interesting application, I think. Brendan is totally right in trying to incorporate information. For example, we're trying to, we're now working on an application which is actually more meaningful, on incorporating microdata. So microdata into forecasting through this projection method. So in that case, it eliminates the problem of choosing the moment condition as coming from a theoretical model, which I think is a, it's a better.
I think we're going to have to bring the session to a close. So join me in thanking Ken Stevens and discussion today.
Thank you.